Hi Crystal.
There's Crystal.
So as we are live on YouTube.
All right, good. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, November 29, 2021. If we could start the meeting with, if I could get a mover and a second there that the committee approved the agenda of November 23, 2021 as circulated. And for a first. Getting a kick my foot. A second there, Melissa? Okay, so the committee approved the agenda of November 23, 2021 as circulated. Carrie?
Yes.
Next is the minutes. If I could get a firster and a seconder for the minutes. Maggie for the firster? And seconder? Anyway, anyone? Melissa? Okay, Jim, Jim?
I'm full there. I got everybody in now.
All right, so first there is Maggie, second there is Jim, that the committee approved the minutes of October 26, 2020, or 2021 as circulated. Paul, Carrie? All righty. Moving on to business from previous meeting. So Santa Parade update. Molly, did you want to start with that, or?
Sure. Things are going good. We're going to decorate the hall on Friday. Some of us will be there at 1 o'clock, so anybody that can come, please come. Even if it's for an hour, two hours, we have a lot of decorations to put up. And we'd like to get the setup done on Friday, so it's less work on Saturday. We haven't talked about a time to get there on Saturday yet. The parade starts at 3:00. It took us almost an hour, hour and a half last year to do it close. And there was only, I think, four of us, so the more the merrier. But if you want to decide on a time to be there for Saturday. I also sent out today an assignment thing, just so everybody is covered for something and everything is covered. Especially with us having it at the hall. So we thought we need, the front door, we need two people, one to check the vaccines and one to sign in. One member of each family must sign a book with their phone numbers. Kitchen, four people, maybe five, two inside the kitchen, two outside, because people cannot serve themselves. We have to pour the hot chocolate and the apple cider. Crafts, we thought three people for that. We're going to have two craft tables. One will be for more like decorating and making little Christmas decorations for the tree. The other one is going to be for anybody who didn't get a letter to Santa written. And we've also got some coloring, Christmas coloring things that they can do while they're waiting for Santa. And the exit door, because we can only have 100 people, is it 100? I think it's 100. We have people in the hall. We've got to kind of keep an eye on how many are in there. So as they leave, we can let more in if we're over our limits. Sanders' helper, that's Brandy. And Val sent out a couple of extra things that I didn't think of. One was somebody to watch over the donation box for the mountain of food. And also the mountain, the mountain of food itself stuff. Val, is there still somebody coming from the mountain of food?
To date, yes, as far as I know, unless they come into a snay. But I am expecting the team, the van, and the whole thing, so wonderful.
So people who just put food right in the van?
Hopefully, yeah. I don't know how they work it. I've never, you know, I've never really stood around and watched, but I guess that's the idea. Just come, put your stuff in the vans. But people that are there earlier before the van arrives, we should have a location where it can be deposited, you know, inside preferably.
Yeah, right. One person watching the mailbox, just making sure the kids get their letters in, and they are addressed with a return address. So when we drop them off at the post office, they can get a letter back from Santa Claus. One person watching the music. And I think that's basically all we need in the hall. We're figuring the parade will get back between 5:00 and 5:30. So we're going to say Santa's going to be there for 5:30. I'm not sure what time we want to open the doors to people. I was thinking 4:30, but maybe, is that too early?
I would say, I would say yes, personally, I would say closer to 5:00, but.
5:00?
That gives them a half an hour before Vince gets back. And gives them time to do any decorating, if they want to, you know, do the tree decoration and not, you know, like the time, this kind of maybe might help Peter help transition, so that, you know, once Santa does sit down or whatever, those kids that are already there can have their quick time first, and then hopefully they will slowly make their way out the back door and then carry forth with the line.
I was gonna say, you definitely don't want it too early, because then you'll have people just swarming the hall instead of being on route when we're going around, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So 5:00?
Everybody in agreement with 5:00? Yeah.
Now, I did have some people volunteer for certain areas. But we still need some more, and I don't know if anybody has a preference of what they want to do and where they want to do it. I know, Melissa, you might be a little late. Did you find out yet if you're in Gatineau or?
I'm hoping to be in Manetteck, but they haven't released the evaluator schedule for the coach that's supposed to be onsite in Gatineau. So if there's a conflict there, then I have to go to Gatineau. But I am hoping to be in Manetteck and be there, but I just don't know for sure yet.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. And we also have people just relieving people for, you know, for breaks or something, just going around, you need help, need help. I don't know, Jim, if you had a preference? Jim, you're muted?
Hit that there.
I'm mute. There we go, I can read at least. Did you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. I'd help in the kitchen if they need help.
Um, well, okay. If I may say, we have.
Already have enough?
Well, at this point in time, I have four, but
Okay.
I'm not sure if we need more than four. You know, it's in the unknown. I have no idea what to expect, so. But if you're available, then I know I can call on you, Jim, so.
Okay.
I'll put you down.
I'll go for that, and then if there's something else needs filling in or something, then I can help out there.
Okay, I'm gonna put you down for the kitchen. So we need, who's going to be at the entrance?
I have Crystal and Jeff.
Crystal put her hand up, and I believe Jeff. Okay, yeah.
We wanted to have one council member there in case Crystal has a problem with somebody.
Agreed.
Yes.
I wouldn't argue with Ian. I might argue with you.
Yeah, I was gonna say. He just has that look, right?
I will do whatever Ian says.
So we need somebody at the exit door to do account, well, to do account, I guess, on people leaving, so we can keep that within the 100, 100 mark.
Do we have a volunteer for the exit door? Okay, Ian says he's got his hand up.
Ian, right on.
There he is.
Thanks, Ian.
Ian's here there.
He's hiding in the bottom corner.
I know Karen's coming, but I don't know if she's, what she's doing. But she did say she was coming. She kind of handled the crafts when it was done at the pancake breakfast at the community center, or the civitan club. So I'm hoping she joins in on that, because I don't do crafts very much, and Jessica's not available.
Are you doing crafts too, Maggie, or is it just Karen?
No, I put myself down for crafts, because there was nobody on there.
Oh. So we'll keep you there with Karen, just in case?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jessica's not available.
Yeah.
And so would Katie, she's good with kids.
Yeah.
I'm not good with kids.
I know, I'm sorry. It's just not a good night.
No. So somebody on the food donations end of it?
We can kind of put the food donations and the mailbox in the same area.
Okay.
Close to the back of the kitchen there, like, close to the kitchen door is probably a good safe area behind the, like, somewhere back there where we can keep an eye on it, where there's constant sight.
That's the food donations.
Sorry, Christie?
I was just gonna say, if we have it kind of when they walk in and they can discard it onto the stage where the trees are.
That's a good idea.
You know, then it's kind of like, you know, the people who are at the door, you know, they kind of see that they're in that area, so that people aren't going around. You know, they're already there, and it's kind of killing a couple birds with windstones.
So if the mailbox is in that same area, one person could probably cover both. Possibly. Do we have a volunteer? Yeah, you would think. Do we have a volunteer for that, Melissa?
I wasn't volunteering. But I was just wondering if we should put the mailbox over with Santa, so they're like, go and see Santa, and then they put their letter in, and that's all part of that process and that movement.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Because I feel like we're getting too many spots that we need volunteers. So if we put the mountain of food with when you come in the entry, and the letter to Santa with Santa, those are managed in those areas, and that's two less volunteers, especially because I feel bad, because I don't know when I'm going to be there.
That makes sense, actually, that will work probably better, everybody.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll babysit that, and I'll babysit Santa.
Okay, so.
Didn't catch that?
Brandy's on it, okay. So the food donation area and the cash box donation, does that need to have a, somebody staffing it, or can we just kind of visualize, you know?
Melissa?
I would say either put the cash donations at the front door, so they drop it off right away, or put it with the hot chocolate, so if it fills, we can pull the food, like, aside.
That's a good idea.
Either split the donate, so cash at the front door and the food with the hot chocolate, or put it in the same location, but put it at one of those locations. So that works nice and easy.
I agree with, well, go ahead, Jessica.
I would just think that if they're bringing food, you would want them to drop it off at the front door, so that they're not having to carry it in with them. I would want to unload that as soon as possible.
Possible.
And then if the donation bought, like, the cash donation is with whoever's at the front door signing papers, that way people could just do it right in the beginning.
Yep, good idea.
Less people that have to, less spots to cover.
Okay. We'll have to have, just, we'll all be watching anyway. And I think there's too many honest people that are going to be coming in, hopefully, that, you know, knowing what we're trying to do. But I don't think we'll have an issue, so we'll all be watching, I think, anyway. We keep it in that one, you know, one area at the front. There's going to be traffic flow quite a bit, so. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So what are we missing then at that point, other than meeting there, getting, you know, the decorations done on the trailer? Or is that, or is that all going to be finished before? Go ahead, Christie.
You guys decided if members of the rec committee will ride on the float?
I can, with him. I was gonna try and put, I've got a Christmas hat, but I can't seem to find a suit. I was gonna try and be Mrs. Claus, but I don't know. I don't know where to find anything like that. Hey, Katie, does your dad have connections?
No, we just had a question about that. Someone said, is there gonna be Mrs. Claus? And my mom was like, I'm not doing it. We need a suit, so they don't have a suit either.
I would think that just being an elf is good enough. They usually have elf hats at the dollar store.
Yeah.
There you go.
I've got some upside down elf legs.
Actually, Brandy, I have an elf hat. You can have it.
I might have one, actually, I'm not sure, but well, I'll look and get back to you, Val.
What about just another Santa hat, you know, like, Mrs. Claus can wear a Santa hat? Yeah, yeah.
Um, Vince, is there room for, because you weren't here while we were having our little private discussion? So I needed an excuse to have these deers. So I thought if we use them for the thing for the first, and then I can plant them in my lawn after, is there room for the deers on the sleigh trailer? Just asking for a friend.
Do you think the same one as last year? The same thing?
Christie?
I think that one last year was Claus's.
No, it was Firehouse, was it not? Not the trailer, I mean the.
The sleigh is the fire department.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they have reindeer on them, right, if I remember correctly?
They have wooden ones.
Yeah, there was, I think. Well, there was the reindeer for Santa's sleigh.
Yeah. Yeah, because we lined it with lights, remember, from each reindeer?
Yep.
So you probably don't need those then. I can put those in there right away.
Yeah, you can put them in your yard, go for it.
And so I guess we'll show up this, 3, 2, 1, this 1 o'clock sound good enough to show up to do?
Ooh, that's cutting it close.
Well.
I would say noon. I'd say noon.
I don't remember what it was last year.
Okay. So is everybody in agreement?
This is what it looked like last year. I don't know if you can see that.
Oh, yeah, I see the reindeer.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we used those white trees that are in the home.
Yeah, they're up there.
We'll have to grab them.
We brought them down.
Yeah, because we're gonna put them beside Santa's chair. You could put your reindeer up front.
Cut, if there's room. I'll bring them. I don't even know how to set them up. If it's too hard, then I'll just, you know, leave it for somebody else to put it together and stick it in the backyard.
Whose trailer was this? Was this Claus's trailer?
That was, I believe, Claus's.
Yeah.
Who's driving Santa?
Who's driving?
Santa, who's driving you? Can't say Miss Daisy, because she's not available.
Last I heard, Jeff was going to drive Claus's truck and trailer. So I spoke to Claus. I spoke to Claus on Friday at Rita Lumber, and he offered his truck and trailer. I have a truck and trailer. There's lots of trucks and trailers. So if you need be, I can drive, and you can stand in the cold.
What about a generator?
I was waiting for a reaction, but you're a little slow on that. Anyways, it's totally up to yourselves to what you just want to do. There's lots, as they say, Jeff can drive, anybody can drive, whatever.
I think we just want to nail down who's doing what.
Yeah, can we nail down a driver? So it'll either be Jeff or Claus, I'm assuming?
Yeah, just do that, exactly, yeah.
Do we have a?
Are you driving Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I'll drive, that's fine. And I can see if I can come stand up. I'll drive, and I think Claus's trailer is pretty good, because it was pretty long and bigger, so it's, it fit everything pretty nicely.
Did he offer this generator by chance, too?
He never mentioned it. I didn't know he just had one last year, but probably.
Light on, right?
I'll touch base with him, because he was going to have to look in the hall. Apparently, Dobson had left the Santa suit down at the hall upstairs. So Claus was supposed to look in to see if it's there or not. I don't know why Bill wouldn't just take it home, put it on a shelf at home, and whatnot. So I'll touch, I'll touch base with Claus tomorrow and see if he's had a chance to look at the hall, and I'll mention about the generator.
Ian's got his hand up, Brandy.
Uh, sorry, Ian?
I have a nice, big, 35-foot-long trailer, if you want to use it.
Holy, that's huge.
That's a big trailer.
We could put the deers in Santa's sleigh.
Yeah, and I have a, and I have a generator, too.
Well, that might be the perfect solution. Is everybody in agreement to go with Ian?
Yeah, 35 footer, yeah.
That's huge.
Yep, can you drive that, Ian?
Yeah, we can drive it.
Thanks, man. All right, so I guess that's locked down.
Perfect.
It's up to everybody, I don't want to.
Is everybody in agreement?
Do you have consensus? Everyone raise your hand?
Yeah, certainly, please.
Yep.
Yeah. So can we back up?
What do you need, Val?
Um, I'm just asking, back up, because Jeff was supposed to drive the Santa parade, Santa float. So is Jeff still going to drive Ian's trailer?
I think Ian.
Ian's gonna drive it.
Ian's gonna drive it.
Jeff is more than welcome to come with me in the truck at any point in time he wishes.
That'll be wonderful.
Oh, probably right along anyway, so yeah, sounds good.
So do we need to do that as a resolution, Christie?
Nope, you're just, this is your discussion, and then what you're going to do, your resolution is going to say that the MRCC move forward with implementing the plans for the Santa Claus parade on December 11th.
Okay.
You'll get there when we get there.
Bye.
So we're going to do the hall decoration Friday, starting at 1:00. We're going to meet at the hall on Saturday at noon to do the, the trailer. That, we open from 5:00 till 8:00. Is that too late?
No, that's good.
5:00 till 8:00?
Yeah.
And we pretty much have everything covered. Because we can float around, too.
Other than the decision, sorry, Christie, go ahead.
I was going to say, on the, in the brief discussion that we had off camera, we talked about mugs.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Needs to be discussed, and everyone needs to talk about the mugs.
Okay, yeah.
Val, do you want to go ahead?
I seen that Maggie has put forth some advertising to, for the children to bring their mugs, so they can decorate it, etc. I also went to the Real Deal and negotiated a really good price for two dozen Santa mugs, which I have here at home, washed and ready to go, but because we have really no idea how many children to expect, I want to put it out there for people's discussion as to how many children we're going to be feeding hot chocolate to. And also Vince, we're still going to need some sort of vessel to put the hot apple cider in. So I guess that's where the environmentally friendly cups will come in. Vince?
Do we, do we have those environmentally friendly cups already, just to make sure?
That would be a question for Vince.
I grasp that. Anyways, Vince has been to Garden Market and spoke to Derek Buffum. Derek's getting a price on the apple cider and is looking into pricing out environmentally cups. At the time, I, at the first time when I was talking to Val, she was talking 300 cups. Now that you're talking of having people bring mugs, are you looking at 150 cups?
Hi, sweetie. Um, I don't think it would be wrong to have them, because we're going to use them in future, you know, events, anyway.
Okay, really?
So if everybody's in agreement, if you've already given Jeff a count of 300, like, he's probably already ordered them by this point. If that's the case, I just don't want him to be stuck with them, but I think we'll use them for future events, anyway. Probably be good to have if everybody else is in agreement.
Okay, so when I spoke to Derek, just to get a ballpark, he was he was thinking that the hot apple, or sorry, not the hot, the apple cider and the the apple cider and the cups would be, just a, he just grabbed a number out of the sky. He was thinking about $125. It could be $35 less, it could be $5 more. So I'm not going to know, and I told him I'd be in to see him. Our thing is on the 11th. I told him I'd be in, probably in the 7th or 8th of December, to pick everything up.
Perfect, yeah.
If we did have an acquaintance before, he's been really great at taking back stuff that was unopened. Yeah. I know he's been really great at taking stuff back before, maybe because of COVID, that might have changed, but if we did have way too many leftover, it might be an option, if we didn't want to be stuck.
Yeah?
I was just going to say, if it's only $150, I'd just buy the things and have them. I wouldn't be worried about sending them back if you.
Because I know I would donate for a log and take a jug home if we're left over with apple cider. I mean, who doesn't love apple cider warmed up with a cinnamon stick at night?
Christie? So we need, so we need to establish about the mugs. Are we doing glass mugs at the event? If we only have 24 mugs, how do you, how do you do that with, say you have 25 kids that show up and the last one doesn't get a mug? And then what if they break? I'm just concerned about what if they break?
Okay, the idea was to encourage the children to bring their mugs from home.
Decorate them.
Okay.
I'm just worried about broken glass, that's the only problem. Takes nothing for a slip of a, you know, I got my mittens on and I, mug slips right out of my hand. But I'm just, I love the idea, like, don't get me wrong, I love the idea of bringing mugs and decorating mugs, but they're the best kind of mugs.
Okay.
It's just I'm more worried about them breaking.
Okay, well, I don't have a comment to that, because I just assumed that the kids would be inside drinking their mugs without their mitts, and and their parents should be right with them, right? That's what I assumed.
Supervising.
Yeah, exactly.
Maggie?
We can also be careful about the mugs giving to the older kids, like, 9, 10. And using the other ones for the younger kids if we have to.
Yeah.
But I do like the idea of them bringing their own mug and decorating it there.
Yeah.
And getting a picture.
Or beforehand, yeah.
Or before. The mugs that I purchased from Real Deal were simply a backup for kids that maybe forgot or didn't know to bring a mug, as opposed to just giving them a paper cup. So you know, if that, if that's not a good idea, then, then we should decide that tonight. Because if nobody is, if, you know, if they're not really for the idea of these extra mugs for the kids that maybe forgot or didn't know about it, then, then I'll just scrap the idea, so we should have a vote.
Yeah. Um, I like the idea. I think it's a good idea. I look at two different ways, you know, like, paper cups, they could burn themselves with, you know, they're not always the best cup, unless you double them. The mugs are secure. I thought it was a good idea if they kind of had the chance to decorate them before coming to the hall. But the thought of them breaking too, kind of, you know, you don't want a child with a broken heart because he broke his mug. Um, again, I guess we'll have to, can I get a vote for yes for mugs? Hand up. And no for, so I'll do the yes first and then the no.
Can I have a question first?
Sure, Jim.
Can I ask a question first?
Yep.
Do they make plastic mugs? I'm just curious if they make plastic mugs.
Probably do, but at this late in the game, I don't know if we'll be able to pull that off.
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody stocked any, or, I was just wondering what, if they had some of them, we could have just, you know, if there were like a couple bucks or something each, I could have bought 50 or 100, just donated them, and you could give every kid a mug.
Uh, Crystal?
Sorry, someone has their TV on. It's cutting into the, the meeting. Can we mute if you have your?
But I'll take a look and see. Oh, thanks.
So I was just going to say, just for simplicity, like, I love the idea of reusing the mugs, but just for simplicity, I think it's probably best if we just go with the, the paper cups. Um, and then we can just try to make an effort in the future and in other ways, for instance, like I have, um, from an event that I did, um, I have a huge case of compostable cups, but they're only for cold drinks, not hot drinks, so we could, you know, make, make a, make a note that for future events, we could choose to use those kind of things whenever possible. Um, but I do agree with the point about, you know, things breaking and being spilled and that sort of thing, so I think there's a lot of moving parts already to this event, and I think maybe just whatever we could do to simplify things and, and, um, not have to worry about people feeling left out of not getting a mug or bringing a mug or that sort of thing, but I do, I do really think it was a really nice idea, Val.
Okay, so to simplify things, um, what about the idea of the kids bringing their own mug, is that, is that, is that not gonna happen either? Because the idea was to bring their mug and, and decorate their mug, have crafts tables, so I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm a little confused at what people really want or expect, so.
Maggie?
The only concern I have with that is how do the kids know? I mean, the ones that are on the Facebook pages, they're gonna know to bring their own mug, but I'm not sure how many kids will actually think of bringing one. It, it should be either we supply them or not at all.
Well, we're gonna supply the mugs, one way or the other, whether they're a plastic, whether they're a paper cup or whether they're a ceramic cup, so um, we have to, if we wanna serve hot chocolate, we have to supply mugs, so, right?
Yeah. But then should we supply the environmental friendly ones? I don't know, I'm confused now.
Kristy?
Yeah, so I think because we haven't met as a full committee since October twenty-sixth, I think that that's why these discussions are happening right now, I think there's been conversations offline, and that, that's why we're trying to get the committee's consensus to move forward with ideas. Um, as for social media, so, you know, we have our Facebook event, and we have the things that we're gonna be adding into it once decisions are finalized tonight. Um, but there's also the mail out for people who don't have Facebook or social media that have signed up for our e-newsletters, there's another one going out tonight, and we would do like a, a mid-week one, you know, right before the event next week, just to really specific to the event, so that's for all those people that have signed up that maybe don't do social media. So that's why we're having these discussions tonight, so that the whole committee can decide how they wanna move forward with the event.
Yep. Jessica?
I just know as a parent, who would, if I was coming, who would be bringing three kids? I don't know, my husband will not want have to bring three mugs, um, we also have to think about spilling and burning. That's gonna be a lot more possible with a mug as opposed to a paper cup with a lid. And that's something else to consider is lids. Cuz you don't want them dumping or spilling and burning and all that stuff, so we need to be cautious, conscious about that too.
Uh, Katie?
That's what I was gonna say about bringing the kids. I know for me, having to remember a cup is an extra thing, but if it's something that somebody's already talked about, about decorating a cup or something, that's fine, we have the paper or whatever the cups are, if a child wants to decorate that when they're there, they, they're, they're more than welcome to do that, so it's not like they're gonna get there and be like, I don't have a cup to decorate, there's gonna be paper cups or whatever kind of cups we're getting, so even if they, there was a conversation, someone did bring one and they didn't, it's okay, they'll still be able to decorate them, but I think that, like, keep it simple. I agree, like, the lids are a really good point, um, I just assumed that they would come with the cups, but it's definitely something that should be a must.
A good question, Kristy?
And remember, all this does come, it's not coming out of your pockets, it's coming out of the budget that's set aside for the recreation committee to do their events. So if we need lids, we need extra cups. Buy the lids, buy the cups, put in your receipts, and they'll be reimbursed.
Yep. So we, we need consensus on, um, the yes or no on whether to do it. I mean, it'd be a big disappointment if they can't decorate a mug, but I get it, uh, Jessica?
What about, they can still decorate their mug, but then they can bring it home, they don't have to, and they could drink their hot chocolate out of a paper cup. Because then there's also the, the thought of bringing home a bunch of mugs that are full of, like, hot chocolate drippings while toting your kids round too, like, they're not gonna be cleaned by us when they, they get sent home. So maybe decorate, they can bring their mugs, decorate them, but then they still get their hot chocolate in a cup, like a paper cup.
Alright.
Sounds reasonable, compromising.
So Vince?
A chance to do a craft, you know, before they come to the parade and come proudly with, you know, those that are aware.
So, so may I just speak, uh, so Vince, going back to Vince's order with, uh, Derek at the Garden Market, um, did Vince say he ordered three hundred cups?
He said three hundred, but Vince, did you mention we will need lids for that, or do we need to call him again?
Well, I don't know why would there be lids on any cup, they're, they're a paper cup, there's never a lid on a paper cup.
Uh, Maggie?
I thank you ladies for making a lot of work for yourselves here.
Usually cups that are for hot beverages.
Have three, have the paper cups, if the kids wanna decorate them, they decorate them. Bringing additional cups and having kids bring mugs and whatnot, is like Katie said, it's one more thing that every, every parent has to worry about. But that, that's just my thoughts, like, a, we're, it's not like the township can't afford anything, we have a budget. Do the environmentally cups, they're there, if they, uh, have something at the craft table with glue and whatnot, uh, or some kind of sticky aspect that they can put, uh, oh, is it, uh, macrame on the back of it, or they put little stuffy cotton balls on to beautify it and whatever, that's great. But try not to make more work out of this than it's supposed to be, please. And I think, uh, right now, just listening to you, is that, that's exactly what's going on with this mug thing, you're making more work for yourselves.
Uh, Kristy?
I'm just gonna stop, I'll stop right now, I think, let's, let's have the vote, let's move forward onto the next item. It, most, most items in committee, you know, you can say your part, you, and then you can rebut your part, but we need to move forward unto the next item, we have a big agenda and it is seven thirty-seven, so I think we need to do the vote and we need to put it in as consensus was given, or yes, like, you know, we just need to do the vote now.
Okay, so those in favor of the mug, put your hands up.
In favor of the mugs, what does that mean?
Like, in favor to have the mug, like, that want the mug there for yes, put your hands up.
Do you mean the mugs or the cups?
No, we're talking about bringing glass mugs to decorate.
It's solely a vote on the mugs, a yes, put your hand up. Okay, I'm all with, okay, and no?
Oh.
Okay. Okay, so consensus is no.
Alright. So no mugs, okay.
No. But Maggie, those Santa mugs can be used as maybe prizes, we could fill them maybe with some M and M things, um, maybe a gift or something.
Valerie's got them, not me.
Or sorry, Valerie?
Oh, I'll just take them back and donate them to, uh, to the Real Deal.
You sure? Can't feel bad about that.
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything more on the Santa parade that we need to figure out then?
So are we doing lids for the cups? I think it's really important for a hot beverage.
Yeah.
Like, and anytime you go get a coffee at Tim Hortons, it has a lid on it.
Yeah, even though we're not Timmies, but I get it.
Uh, as a mother to a small child, a lid is required.
I agree. Um, Vince, is there a possibility that we can get lids with these mugs?
I'll touch base, I'll touch base with Derek tomorrow and find out.
I appreciate that, thank you. Um, so anything else concerning that part of the? No, Kristy?
So just to recap, we have everyone in place for all the, the positions needed for the event, correct?
We believe so.
We've got that, we've got who's driving the truck with the trailer.
Ian. Very bottom half, Crystal?
Um, I just wanted, I just realized if, um, if Jeff is gonna be at the door with me and it's opening at, what did we say? Four thirty?
Five o'clock. Five o'clock.
Is he gonna be back, if he's driving with Ian, is he gonna be back in time?
Yes, we won't open the door until everyone's back. So like, we said five thirty originally, that Santa would be opened to meet, but like, I think we'll be back well before five thirty.
Maggie?
And, and if, if, if they're not, somebody will be at the door with you. One of us will be at the door with you.
Yes. Okay, so you got, you've established you're decorating, you've established when you're meeting on Saturday. Is there anything that you can think of that is outstanding before we start really advertising and pushing this out tomorrow?
Yeah, I wanna make sure that we're completely clear, so is there anything that anybody can think of that hasn't been brought up? Or that we might foresee that day? Okay, so.
Is, is it when the, when the people are in the hall and they're having turns to see Santa, like, is it gonna be a lineup, is it gonna be, um, just people go up as they feel like it, like, is how?
It'll have to be aligned to be fair and keep things moving at, at a reasonable pace.
Okay.
So once they're done doing their decorations, they can go into the line, or if they choose to go to the line first instead of the decorating table, but it's to try and keep things so that, you know, in order, a semi-order, I guess. Again, as they say, let's try not to make it too complicated.
In years before, the lineup hasn't been an issue, and I don't think that there's gonna be an issue this year either. There's a couple things going on that night, so I think that it'll be okay.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything to add to this particular area?
Um, maybe I was just looking on the, um, the page, oh my goodness, I can't even talk, the event page. Um, and it says for COVID protocols to visit the website, um, I feel like it should be advertised on there, that proof of, uh, vaccination, it, like, rate very boldly at the bottom, that it's gonna be. Cuz I think it's going to be an issue if it's not.
So that's, uh, what I've been working on, um, it's gonna be going out in the new ads once we finalized everything, so, you know, we're, you know, we're into the, we got like twelve days now, so it'll be like, you know, every day we add a little bit more just to amp up. If I'm advertising too soon for events, you kind of lose it, um, you lose the interest, so you need to do it closer as we get closer, so I think, you know, starting December first, you know, is a really good time, hey, we're December, let's get ready for Santa. So we've got some more ads and things coming out that really clearly state what we, what we're requiring, so.
Awesome, thanks, Kristy.
Yeah?
Uh, how are you going to, um, I know we're gonna have people at the door and that, but how are you gonna stop somebody from coming in if they haven't had it? Like, I mean, sorry to say you can't come in, but I've been at places where people have just walked in.
Well.
Like, you don't want, you know, Crystal or Jeff or somebody being into some kind of a brawl or something, like, are you gonna call the police and have some, like, it can happen, it may, shouldn't happen, but I've been, I was just in the store the other day and some guy walked in and, and, uh, the other people were yelling at him. You know, he didn't have no, no mask, and he didn't even, he says, and I'd never had a vaccination neither.
Being a child event, though, with Santa Claus, I would hope that we're not gonna have those issues. Um, but knowing it ahead of time and having maybe a sign outside of the door might prevent that also. Um, but we have to have these strict measures because it's a child event.
No, no, I, I agree with that.
There's no caving on that. Um, we have to follow rules and regulations, it's, it's the law, like, it's, it's the bylaws and the law, like, you gotta follow what the protocol is. Um, they, they should be respectful. Um, and again, um, you know, to ask for somebody to leave the premises over that, I, I think it'd be more embarrassed, so hopefully we don't have to run into that. Um, does anybody else have anything that they wanna add over and above, Kristy?
Yeah, we're gonna have lots of signage, we, you know, we've got the laminator and everything, we're gonna, we're gonna make proper signs so that things are outdoors, but we're gonna, as we get into December, we're really going to make it clear, these, this is what the event is.
Yeah.
This is what it is, and I think we have more than enough people that nobody will be on the door by themselves, and I think, you know, I know Ian was gonna say something there too, I, I can let, Ian, did you wanna go ahead?
No, I think you guys have, uh, really summed it up, and at the end of the day, I'm hoping that I agree with everybody else, that hopefully nobody puts us in that situation, that'd be, that'd be a poor situation, have to put us in, but um, you know what, we can very nicely ask them to leave, and if they don't, then unfortunately, they're gonna have to call the police and ask them to have them removed. Or, or we can get Vince to cattle rope them and tie them up.
Well, we'll hold them for the, uh, Dunkin' Tank.
So if you're ready to move forward, uh, Val, the, the resolution that you're gonna write is, you know, the, that the MRC move forward with implementing the plans for the Santa, Santa, uh, the Santa Christmas parade on December eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and then we need a first and seconder.
Well, if I could have a first or please, Maggie, and a second is Jessica.
And then you say all in favor?
Got it. All in favor as discussed? Melissa?
Yep, Carrie.
Carrie, I can't see, but I've been assuming he's.
Oh, yeah, I had my hands down.
Okay, yep. So all in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. My camera keeps moving around, would you stop that? All of a sudden I've got Kristy at the top and then at the bottom, like.
Every time Vince raises his hand. He moves everybody around.
I just think that I got everybody in the right spot, and then all of a sudden it goes. Alright, so, I'll, Carrie, I'll sign that, um, when I get it, and, or if it can be dropped off to you, Kristy, and then I can sign it with you at the office. With my lovely John Henry, correct? So assuming that we can move on to the next. My loop? Just like, how do you know, I'm like, err. Can't be forged. Um, so moving on to the next one, um, Roseville Hall Program up to date. I believe, um, Maggie, that was, we need to pick a date tonight, but I'll let you take that if, cuz you had your hand up.
Uh, um, we're gonna have to, I think, defer this because the resolution has not gone to council yet. Right?
It'll go on the seventh.
Yeah, so we can just defer this till, it's gonna have to be January now, so I don't know what you're gonna do about the January one, maybe.
That was originally, I think we were gonna start off with Miles, but of course, I couldn't even give Miles a date yet because we hadn't finalized the date or a specific day of the month. Um, cuz we need to make sure that it's the same day, you know, like, for, to make it easy for people to remember. Um, so yeah, like, I, the only thing when we're getting, um, not a full quorum, it makes it hard cuz things are gonna be deferred, we only have, it takes how many days again, it takes, I'm like, Maggie, can I explain? Before we can, you know, get things totally done.
Unless, unless we can do, when that goes to council on the seventh, maybe they can, maybe they can pick a date after that for the January one. Because if, if we want it to be the same date every month, it doesn't necessarily have to come back to us in January, maybe they can just, because one of the, on the resolution, it was also, who was gonna do the bookings and when? Kristy?
I was just gonna say, um, you know, you can pick a date and Jeff or Ian can give a verbal update, I think, like, like, cuz your minutes are gonna be on the next agenda, so they are going to see everything from the twenty, October twenty-sixth, so that information's there, so then Jeff and Ian could speak to it about what you're planning on doing.
And the date. So do we have, Maggie?
But the thing was, we wanted the same day, and we don't know what day the hall is available. We need the availability of the hall at seven o'clock the same day every month, whether it's a.
As of right now, there are no bookings for the New Year, so you would be the first.
But we have control, Maggie.
You can pick whatever day you wanna pick. You can pick whatever day you wanna pick.
I feel special now.
Are we doing this on a weekday?
Yeah.
Make sure you're giving enough time to advertise in the beginning of each month, right, for it, so that it gets enough. That.
Like the third Thursday of every month.
Sure, let's call the third Thursday of every month.
How's your interval? Does anybody have?
So that's January twentieth. You know, February seventeenth, March seventeenth, April twenty-first, May nineteenth. That's your Thursdays, so.
Is that sound reasonable with everybody?
Yeah. I think some of, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I think some of those dates coincide with things like March break and family days. Weekends or something, I don't know, but the audience for the, are you talking, you're just talking about the information nights? I guess the audience for that, would that, those dates wouldn't matter, anyway.
Would be March break. But yeah, if it's for the seniors, then I don't think that's an issue.
Not just seniors, I think it's more or less anybody in the community that, you know, wants to be there for the information night, not just seniors. I think it, it covers everybody.
I think because it's an evening, i- it doesn't matter whether in, they're in school or on March break, unless they're going away on vacation, then they wouldn't be here anyways, so.
So let's go.
So is that an agreement? Is everybody in agreement? If so, put your hand up.
Do I need to do a resolution for this, Christie?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so is that, as you start talking to it, um, let's look at what we did for the last one. So what's going to council is, you know, the finalized list of information nights, so you would, we could just put on there. Um, that council, um, that the MRC requests that council approve. Um, the third Thursday of each, no, the third Thursday from, you're only doing Jan- January to June, right? So the third Thursday in January, February, March, April, May, June. For the information nights to be held at seven PM.
And if I can get a firster. Have to look around my horn here. Oh, uh, Katie, sorry, and a seconder, Jessica? Jessica or Jim?
Doesn't matter, that's fine.
But Katie and Jessica? That the information night will be on that Thursday night.
Yeah.
I'll sign that as well. We have consensus, we, I think we already did that, so I will sign that when I get the sheet. Um, so moving on. Oops, sorry.
Maggie also mentioned at the, uh, trying to decide what night we wanted. Also, who is going to be responsible for selection of the, um, presenters at these information nights?
That's already in the resolution.
Is it? Okay, fine.
Yeah, this date selection is just kind of a, an on top of it, on top of that previous resolution. That helps you move forward for January.
Okay, oh, okay.
So as far as programming goes, apart from the information nights, has there been any, um, other programming? Proposed or planned, um, for the hall?
I think that's in the next, it's in another item on the agenda.
Okay.
You did have your hand up, but Maggie, did you have anything else to say about?
Just gonna answer, Crystal, that we did have one for, um, like, exercise night, speaker night and stuff like that. But we were going to wait until January, uh, to get into that, because I do like your idea of having them come to us. Instead of us going out and looking for people to do stuff, advertising for people that do yoga, do crafts, do painting, whatever. If they wanna come to the hall and arrange something to do that, we just thought we'd wait till January for that.
But the first one, I think we had said about, January was possibly Miles for the firefighter department. And then he was going to, um, from there, once we knew the date. Um, we, we need to let him know so that he can use his contacts to plan the fi- um, police and ambulance. Are we good to move on to the next one now? Okay, so Christmas lights update. I didn't have that one.
Uh, this was the one that Christie was talking about, having people send in their, they're doing their houses up and sending in pictures.
Yeah, we did that last year. We did it closer, um, towards Christmas, and it usually ran for the last, the two weeks before Christmas, up until Christmas there. Um, we'll start doing that a little bit later, like, kind of at the beginning, more like at the end of this week or the next week. Just kind of putting out that this is what we're gonna do again. I know you guys talked about, um, prizes or something like that, but it's, it's a little hard, cause we don't put people's addresses on, we just put snowflakes on so that we don't give out actual addresses. We just did snowflakes as the, this was the approximate location of the lights. So, I don't know, we had a lot of good, everyone really loved it last year, so.
E- e- even without the addresses, we could still do prizes if they voted per picture, like here to Able. And I don't know if this is possible, cause I'm not a tech savvy person, as you all know. Um, is there a way to, once everybody's, you know, deemed their address, taking a photo and sending it in? And having the community vote on their favorite? Just a thought.
But it's how are you gonna do the prizes and what are you gonna give as a prize? Then it comes into, are we over compliment, complicating it right now and?
Yeah, and that's.
Just making, and just making it simply about, let's, let's enjoy the lights.
Yeah, let's just enjoy the lights.
Excuse me, instead of doing a pride.
Yep.
You have, you have people complimenting A, B, C, D, however you put them. Then you could just put them on your, uh, website. A was the most voted for animation, B was the most voted for spiritual, and C was the most voted for, uh, open season.
Complicated and sounds simplified, I like it.
Well, that would be good for when people, um, submit their addresses. They could submit a photo of their home, and then it could be put on for advertising.
Yeah. I like that.
Yeah.
Is everybody in agreement with that? That, that sounds really good. Alright, do we need a?
The resolution would be that the MRCC discussed the, uh, Christmas lights update and. And received this for information, cause we're just receiving it for information.
Yeah. If I could have a firster, please? Maggie, and a seconder, Melissa? Thank you. So Maggie's a firster, Melissa's the seconder.
Got it.
Alrighty. My, my skibbles. Um, so we can move on, I guess, to the next one. Um, pardon me, tickle. Uh, items for consideration, report from the RRA meeting. I don't know if it has that one.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I went to the RRA meeting over in Beckwith. Uh, it was really, really interesting. It was very, I, I sent a report out, you guys can read it yourself and go to the website. Um, it was really all about trails and the number of trails that are coming, how they're trying to connect them. So you can actually, at one point, you'll be able to go all over Ontario with trails. Um, the guest speaker was really interesting. She was with the Olympics. And she wasn't, I thought she was Olympian, but she wasn't. She was a correspondence organizer. So she's the one that organizes everybody to go to all the interviews, and she had a lot of good back, backroom stories, and it's amazing the contracts those guys have to sign when they go to the Olympics. I wasn't aware of half the stuff that was on there. And the speakers I sent, I put in the report. Um, and it was interesting too, because most of, or all of the recreational students from Gomfman College were there. And we had been discussing getting them to come and do their, their, um, work stuff, work things with us. And they were very interested in doing that. They had, a lot of them are from the city, a lot of them had never worked with small communities with recreational, um, bunches and stuff like that, and they were very interested. And they were gonna actually talk to their teacher about doing some of that, instead of going to like the sports plaques and stuff like that. So it was really, really interesting. And the rest you can read for yourself. That's it.
Thank you, Maggie.
Just resolution for information for council.
Yeah, just that the, yeah, the MRC receives this report from the RRA meeting for information.
Crystal?
I just wanted to thank, um, Maggie for taking the time to attend that event. Um, I think it was well worthwhile, and I'm glad that she was able to do that.
It was a really good lunch.
Wish I could do those things. Good to have you back, Jeff. Um, alright, so.
We need a firster and seconder.
Seconder for that, if I could, please? Firster? Yeah, and Katie, okay, I got Katie, seconder. Going around the horn here, seconder Crystal. But Katie's the firster, Crystal's the seconder.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Yep.
Can I just make a comment? Um, the RRA meetings are, I think, twice a year, this one coming up in the spring. If anybody is interested in going, I know I send out a bunch of emails to people asking if you were interested in going. Um, I didn't get it back, so I'm not sure I went to spam or whatever I did. But if you do wanna go, it, it can be more than one person too. It doesn't have to just be one person from each flight. But their meetings are very, very interesting. And I'll make sure everybody knows the next one is.
It's through the week though, right, Maggie? Like, I probably wouldn't be able to go with my job.
They just can, they've been on Zoom for a year and a half. This was the first meeting that was not on Zoom. So I'm assuming it's during the week, but I honestly don't know.
Too bad it wouldn't be like on March break when I could go. But thank you, cause I wish I could attend. I just unfortunately, seven hours of driving, can't do it. Um, so can we move on to the next? Oh, did we get consensus on that last? No, we don't need it. Um, next would be the calendar of events for twenty twenty-two.
I put this together just because we were talking about, um, how much money we're going to look for in the year twenty twenty-two, and somebody had mentioned. Maybe we should have an idea of what we're going to do before we start looking at the money side of it. So I just put down some ideas. It's, it's, it's not even for council yet, it's just for us to think about. The only one that I, I will take off is the March break program, because I had hoped to get together with one or two of the libraries that, like, that are the Smith Falls Library and the Merrickville Library. Uh, to come up with something that we could do at Rosedale Hall. But because of the way the resolutions go, it's not feasible for this March break. It wouldn't even go to council till February. No, not even that. It wouldn't even go to council till the first of March, because our meeting's the end of January. It wouldn't go to council till the end, beginning of March, and March break is the second week of March. But it's just something to think about in the future. Um, and the ones in the fall, if anybody wants some interest in them, you know. Find out more information on them or plan to do something, because we do have to start thinking a little further in advance now, because we have to do that sixty-day thing. If we wanna do, like, for instance, a Halloween party at the hall, we're gonna have to think about it in probably June or July. Uh, or we end up with this one week to go type thing, and it, it's hard to do with them. So just have a look, if you're interested in something, or you think it would go over wealth in, in, in the township, let's start working on it earlier.
Yep. I fully agree. We have to be more aware and time sequence things accordingly to the sixty days in order to make sure that it gets to council and can be approved. Um, and as well as, I guess, to be polite, like, to try and be polite about it is, and I know everybody, you know. It's hard for people to attend, but unless we have a quorum, we cannot do any voting of any kind. Uh, we can't even hold a live Zoom meeting, um, just an example last week there. So that's important to know for attendance-wise, when, when Christie puts the emails out. Please respond to them so that we can make other arrangements if we can't do it on that specified date. Um, so was there anything else with the calendar of events? Did anybody have any ideas that they wanna shoot out at this point? That we can maybe put on the, um, board so that, um, it's looked at? You know, so that it doesn't get missed or left behind or not be able to do it. Jessica?
About like an Easter egg hunt?
Yep. I like that idea.
Been successful before. We had, what, did we do breakfast too at the hall for the Easter?
That'd be nice, like a pancake breakfast.
I can't remember. I feel like, Jeffrey, was that Easter?
I feel like we did one at Easter years ago. We've done it at Christmas, but I feel like we did one at Easter too as well, and I think it'd be a cool idea.
Easter bunny. I have pictures when my kids were little of doing it.
But it'd be a good one, cause I mean, we're not gonna have a, 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 like a breakfast with Santa, I don't think, it doesn't look likely, but maybe by Easter, we might be able to do. And, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to speak for council, but I'm sure we might be also game for being part of that, to do like a, like, part of the breakfast too as well. That'd be kind of fun to do a, a joint venture with council and, uh, and the, and the rec committee too as well, so.
Maybe.
You have an Easter egg hunt, and then you bring your Easter eggs and make them scrambled.
Just shake the chicken before I lay it there. Katie, you were gonna say something.
I, I can't remember exactly, but I think that we just hid plastic eggs, and then they brought their plastic eggs in and got like a little.
Or a basket or something. I'm trying to remember too.
I never went to it.
Jessica?
I have another idea. Um, somebody mentioned that we could rent the movie Under the Stars equipment from Smith Falls. So if we could do a couple of movie nights in the summer.
Outside?
Yeah.
Well, cause we have that machine on the inside too, right?
Not the same.
Did you know it was Christie? The projector thingy?
Yeah, the projector.
I wasn't there when they were checking it out.
Yeah, the projector works.
Okay. Maggie?
Didn't we, didn't we ask the, the library about something about movie night, because they do movies at the library, but they pay for the copyright. Maybe we could join them somehow.
I know it came up. We have to pull that file.
We talked to, I think it was the Smith Falls bunch from the library about doing something jointly.
Yeah, we talked to Sarah Lynn about it. Um, they want to do events with us, but in terms of the movies, their license, they have to do it, I think, at the library, because they do like a pay-per-use, not like a annual license necessarily. So their license is a little bit different, so we would probably still need to get our own license for it.
Yeah, but I think she said that she could help us with the paperwork in order to have it at Rosedale outside.
I think that was the old president, or like the old kind of, um, whatever the head of the library is called. I can't think of it right now, um, but I do know that there's somebody new in that role now. So I think we would have to approach the library and see if they're still, like, a lot of the board, um, is the same. But it's like actually a new person in the role of running the library.
I think her name's Amanda.
Amanda was the president of the board, but is the new person named Amanda too? Cause Amanda Guerin was like the president of the board at one point. I can ask Amanda or Sarah Lynn the next time I see them, but.
Maybe we can take one of them to a meeting in February or something, February, March, and have them see what we could do that way. To have them.
Was one of our stalemates Wi-Fi? I'm just, just, I'm having a memory thing here. Do we need Wi-Fi to run this? No? Okay.
I can't see it being Wi-Fi.
Okay, I just had. Okay, I just had to ask because I've never been to one of them and I've never. A DVD package or something that you would use.
It would just be a Blu-ray player with some speakers.
Alright. Alright. That sounded really interesting, continue.
I think that was Ian.
Kind of like a bad Johnny joke. Anybody else have anything to bring up? I'm trying to keep a straight face and make my whole table shake.
What about a haunted house for Halloween? Like an outdoor haunted house?
But a lot involved in it. I know the garden market used to do it for years as well and if there's just so much involved to the creation of it. And doing it and. Yeah, that's a big bite. That's a big load to, to, to chew on, but I mean, um. Anybody else have anything to say?
I would like to do something for Halloween next year.
It would be nice to do something.
Well, I think Halloween, let me just look for sure. Oh, Halloween's on a Monday.
Could we do the similar idea, like the Christmas lights and do like the best decorated house?
Well, there is also in Beckwith, they were, they were doing, um, something for a few years. They had this like outdoor barn thing and they had a bunch of activities in there. They had like a mini haunted house. They had just all sorts of different small activities and the kids could win like candies and prizes and stuff. Carnival for Halloween, kind of.
We could put a movie on inside the hall.
That'd be good.
On the weekend before?
The weekend before, yeah, that sounds reasonable, the weekend before, get your spook on.
And make it really scary.
Just asking, can I, can I? Does anybody else have any other ideas? Just think of the quarters to dates and just remember as we go forward, we need time. In other words, sixty days, two months from meeting to meeting, we need to bring these things up ahead of time. So as things kind of jump into your brain, shoot an email to all of us. We can add it to the agenda so that it can be discussed on the next, like on the next meeting, according to, to make sure that things are going smoothly. Jessica?
We were talking about like a little artisan market or something. Or meet the, meet the farmers market.
And our CD Saturday, that is not gonna go this year.
That is on our schedule for April to coincide with someone speak, coming to the hall to speak from a greenhouse. And we're gonna try and make it the same couple of days apart.
Yeah, because that still gives people plenty of time, whether they're planting or not, to do their seeds and get them, you know, started and what have you. Christie?
The nice thing about like all the events, you know, as they finalize and this is what's gonna happen and we get them in the calendar. Like they'll be right on the website, you know, people, you know, where you go to see all the, the meetings and such. You know, all the events will be listed there so that everyone will have that information and advertise it as they, each month, so.
And that'll help us grow, like that'll help our idea expand and grow. Um, and that, hey, look at, when you, when you look at where we were a couple of years back when we first started, I think with like just a small group of us at that point. Um, give yourself a pat on the back, everybody, because I think we're doing really good. We just make sure that we're meeting on a steady basis. Um, is there any unfinished business or any other business?
You gotta have a resolution.
Okay, resolution.
So it would be that the M R C received, uh, the report of calendar events for twenty twenty-two for information. And move forward with further discussions at the next meeting.
Okay, and if I could get a firster? Maggie and a seconder, Jessica? Maggie's the first or Jessica's the seconder, Maggie?
No, go ahead, be all in favor.
That's all in favor?
I just had a quick question for Christie, because I don't know, um, sanitizer for the hall. Is there stuff there or do we get that from the township or do we pick that up?
I think there are a few there, but I think that would be one of those items that you guys would purchase in bulk and return for reimbursement.
And a couple of maybe containers just along that stoop as they're walking up, you know, so they can kind of squirt on the way up, might be handy as well.
Bring that thing you spray your teeth with.
Yeah, I got that. My Keith got handy. Um, so does anybody, that's it, we can move on, Crystal?
Um, I just wanted to ask about the, the recreation feasibility study, what the status of that is. Maybe Jeffrey and would know about that, because we, we, it was presented to council, we submitted some feedback that I'm not sure they received. Um, and I haven't seen anything further on that.
Yeah, as far as I know, uh, Mary has, has all the feedback back. Uh, we would have, we would have talked about, I think, at council more, just that we've had so much on the plate at council. Uh, that it kind of gets bumped a little bit, so, and obviously with some of our, a little bit of our staff turnover too as well. Has caused a little bit of a slowdown with a, with a few things. Uh, so that's really the kind of, uh, the coles notes of, of where it's at, uh, hoping. Uh, we're gonna see it, uh, maybe in December, so we can kind of get it kind of finalized, I guess you could say. And then we can start using it as a working document after that. So that's, that's sort of where it's at now, but yeah, it's kind of been, there's a lot in the plate on council. Guys, it's kind of, uh, you know, tripling its way through. Hope that answers the question.
You've had your hands full, noted about it. And thank you. Um, okay, any unfinished business or any other business that anybody would like to bring forward tonight? No? Yeah, I think we still had a reasonably good accomplishing meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Um, so I need a mover and a seconder, um, for the recreation committee to confirm the direction.
Can I just remind everybody that January, or sorry, on the tenth, we'll be at the hall at one o'clock. Even if you can come for an hour, two hours, we'll be there probably most of the afternoon, if you're not sure if we're still there.
I will, I will say right now, I'm on the road driving, unfortunately, so I am.
Bring this, bring the bus and bring the kid.
I don't think Frank would like me and I'd have a lot of screaming parents.
Not till the twenty-fifth of January. That's a long way away. Sorry, that's it.
Does seem far away. Yeah, because we won't have one in December, eh?
I think the office is closed, isn't it, that week between Christmas and New Year? Yeah, so it would have been the twenty-eighth, but the offices are closed.
And Chris is like, I'm on holidays, leave me alone. I get it.
I'll be on holidays too, so leave me alone. No, I'm kidding. I never liked that.
Um, just because it was brought up earlier, do we need to push our meeting time back? Is that why people are having a hard time getting to the six o'clock? Like, do we need to start meeting at seven or six thirty? Is that going to make it so that we have quorum? Like, I know I struggle for six o'clock.
I like the idea. Um, we're gonna have to maybe have Chrissy talk to Jasmine. When's Jasmine come back?
In January.
Okay, so we'll be able to actually do, if, if we can all please make sure that we join as many of us as possible. On the twenty-fifth of January, and I guess that will be one of the, for, one of the items that will definitely be on our agenda that, um, meeting. Um, to find out, you know, legalities and, and if we can change the time to a later time. Because it, I find it didn't work for everybody tonight. Um, I think most by the shaking of the heads in some ways are in agreement. Um, and it, and it's nice to have everybody. It's nice to have the full house. Um, it just makes it a lot easier and smoother and, and again, more feedback. Um, so thank you for everybody coming to me. So if I can get a first or a seconder, so that we can get the, the confirmation for the direction. Uh, Jim's firster. Okay, the seconder. So now raise your hand at once. Maggie adjusted right at the same time. Um, Maggie, for the seconder. So I've got the firster, uh, the move by Jim, second by Maggie. That the recreation committee confirm all of the direction, uh, as agreed at the meeting of. Um, tonight is November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and forward that direction to council for final approval. All carried? Alright, Carrie. Sorry, my voice takes a little while. Just, you know, I'll bet it. Alright, so, um. Next meeting is January twenty-fifth at six o'clock, the AM, and it is now eight twenty-five. Can I get a first or a seconder so that we can adjourn? Uh, Melissa for a firster and a seconder is Jessica. So moved by Melissa, second by Jessica. Uh, that this meeting now adjourn at eight twenty-five P M. All carried? Have a great evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us this evening.